All right, welcome everyone. Thanks for joining us this evening. I'm Andrea Keen, Chair of the Wayzetta School Board. I call to order the Wayzetta Public Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting for July 13, 2020. On March 13 of 2020, Governor Walz issued Executive Order 20-01, which declared a peacetime state of an emergency pursuant to his powers under the Minnesota Statutes after 12 Emergency Management. This allows school boards to meet by conference call or other electronic means under Minnesota Statute 13D.021. So before we begin, I'll go through a couple of Zoom meeting reminders. First of all, please identify yourself when speaking. If you have background noise, please mute your microphone when listening. Please do not make use of the chat feature as this is a public and recorded meeting. And finally, in an attempt to make sure all voices are heard, each board member will be called upon for all action items. Feel free to pass if you don't have a question or a comment. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Chris McCullough.
Here.
Linda Cohen.
Here.
Sarah Johansson.
Here.
Bonita Lucky, here. Cheryl Posey.
Here.
C N Faulkner.
Here.
Chase Anderson.
Here.
Andrea Keen.
Here. Thanks. All right. First on our agenda this evening is the approval of the agenda and the consent agenda items. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member or a citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed as a consent agenda item and addressed. The consent agenda items are detailed in your board packet. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
C N Faulkner, I still move.
Cheryl Posey, I'll second.
Thank you. It's moved and seconded. Could we please have a roll call?
Cheryl Posey.
Yes.
Sarah Johansson.
Yes.
C N Faulkner.
Yes.
Chris McCullough.
Yes.
Bonita Lucky, yes. Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Andrea Keen.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda, we have reports from organizations, and we have no reports from organizations this evening. Next, we have recognitions, our favorite part of the meeting. Dr. Anderson, I'll pass it off to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Good evening, everybody. It's my honor tonight to recognize a very large team of individuals, and we have with us tonight Hillary Dish and the Wayzetta Kids Site Manager Team. I think several are here with us. If those that are here to be recognized from this team would just kind of give us a friendly wave.
Yay!
Congratulations, everybody. I'd like to share a little bit that was submitted on their behalf, and then I would ask Hillary to maybe share a little bit and invite anybody else who may want to share as well. The community ed staff is very proud to honor and recognize Hillary Dish and the Wayzetta Kids Site Manager Team as July Employees of the Month. The team includes Jamie Anderson, Jen Rotbold, Kristen Erickson, Sharon Foltz-Ringstrom, Kathy Kucluck, Patty Olson, Hannah Olstad, Michelle Renanen, Carrie Shannon Anderson, Toby Tombers, and Heidi Weagle. Sorry for my missteps on a number of those names. My apologies for that. Hillary and her team of site managers are dedicated to ensuring our community has high-quality, safe childcare programming at Wayzetta Public Schools. Their dedication was even more evident this spring. On March 16, the governor gave an executive order that schools would be closed due to the coronavirus pandemic and required school districts to provide free childcare to essential workers. Thanks to Hillary and her team, two days later, our newer emergency childcare program was open. We're very fortunate to have a dedicated and brave leadership team that jumped right in to make a plan and roll it out quickly. They did this amidst ever-changing guidelines from state departments and in a situation with many unknowns about the coronavirus. Hillary and her team's collective efforts resulted in our district being able to provide much-needed, safe, and engaging childcare for our community. Throughout the program, this great team continuously looked for ways to improve and support our community. They have shown much flexibility and engaged in what sometimes seemed like constant creative problem-solving. The impact of this team's effort was significant. They provided 28,865 hours of critical childcare for 131 students from March 18 to June 4. Children ranged in age from preschool to grade 5, representing all nine of our elementary schools. Parents utilizing the program were so grateful to have a safe place for their children to be while they were at work, many of whom work in the healthcare sector. Children were provided free breakfast and lunch along with distance learning support. Many parents commented that these services relieved some of the great stress they were experiencing due to the pandemic. Now, during the summer months, their hard work continues. They revised our current Wayzetta Kids childcare program to meet state and health and safety guidelines and are serving 700 students to address the essential childcare needs of our community. This team deserves much appreciation for their ongoing hard work, dedication, and service to our community. We wish to share our great appreciation and congratulations to Hillary and the Wayzetta Kids Site Manager Team. And I'll go off script, if I may, just for a moment, and give you a heartfelt thank you so much for all that you did to make that happen. The way it's written in the script is spot-on, and observing it all unfold, and literally having turned on a dime to put that program in place, continuously improve it day after day, was just really fascinating and incredible. And I can't thank you enough for all that you did for those families and those children, and to help position the school district so well to implement that requirement, and do it with a smile on your face, and to just make it a happy place every day. If I had a hat, as I oftentimes say, I would tip it to you in my gratitude and appreciation, but I just can't thank you enough, and the board members feel the same as do the broader members of the broader community. But this time, I'll turn it over to Hillary and/or Jenny Ebert, if you have any comments that you'd like to share as well. Feel free to team it here with Hillary. Hillary, congratulations to you and your team, and at this time, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Chase. I would just want to tell everyone again, thank you. Huge thank you to my site manager team. There's no way that I could have ever done this without each and every one of you. So thank you so much from the bottom of my heart. And for Jenny and Lynn, I very much appreciate all the support as well as the district's support. I think throughout the whole process, we really felt supported by everyone, from Chase to the school board, to the communication team, to HR, Stacy in HR, everyone just really supported us each and every step along the way. So thank you very much for all of that as well. Yes, and my deepest and sincerest appreciation goes off to this team. I know I've said it to a lot of you who have been on this or who are in the school board meeting right now, and I think I've said it to them, but I want to say it again and publicly as this is recorded, and I hope everybody out there is listening and watching, because this team deserves so much credit. It was really hard work coming in in those early months to come and be there and support our families and support our students in a way that was sometimes scary. And this group just stepped forward and never looked back and always was looking forward in how they could do more and more to support our students and to support our district. So thank you to this group. Very, very appreciated, and congratulations.
Thanks, everyone. A well-deserved honor. Hillary and your team, it's so great that you could join us during the meeting so that we can honor you sort of in person. I think the school board has just been in awe of what you've been able to accomplish over the last four months. It's just incredible. So thank you so much for your dedication to all of our students. I know they are so well taken care of. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. You're welcome to stay, but it's also still a beautiful evening out there, so feel free to make a graceful exit whenever that might move you to do so. Have a great evening. Thanks. Keep up the great work. We really appreciate it.
Great, thanks. Okay. Next on our agenda, we have the Audience Opportunity to Address the Board. This section of the agenda provides an opportunity for members of the audience to address the school board. As we conduct our meetings using Zoom, members of the public who wish to make a comment during the Audience Opportunity to Address the Board may email their comments to ashley.winter@wayzettaschools.org, and the school board chair will read the comments aloud during the teleconference meeting. Please submit your comments by noon on the Monday of the meeting. We do not have any public comment this evening. All right. Next on our agenda, we have Administrative Reports and Recommendations. We will start off with Dr. Anderson under the Superintendent. We've got an agenda item to talk about school opening planning update for fall of 2020. So I'll turn it back over to Chase.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board and our administrative team. I just wanted to give you a quick update on a few things in regard to the work we're currently involved in and the directives that we have from the state of Minnesota in regard to opening up a school in the fall. As I think everybody knows, it's evolving in sort of a fluid situation, if we will, and we would anticipate that throughout the summer, we'll continue to get additional guidance and direction. I thought, for the purposes of tonight, I would give you a brief overview of the memo from the Minnesota Department of Health that was sent out to us. There's also a much lengthier document that came from the Minnesota Department of Education, or MDE, that highlights a lot of different aspects of opening up school and considerations for school districts. That probably relates a little bit more to instructional delivery and equitable learning experiences for all students within the district and across the state, and not quite as much in regard to the operations. I think on the front end, we've chosen to prioritize the operational aspects, because we really have to get the logistics and those types of things figured out on the front end. We've had experience doing onsite learning with students for decades, actually. That's sort of our thing and our preferred and our normal mode of delivery. And now, after the spring, we've had some experiences also with distance learning, where we implemented technology systems and engaged from afar. So the three scenarios that we've been asked to prepare for and be ready to use in the coming school year, possibly not any one model being for the entire year, with the reality that we could shift gears between any of these three models or some variation of more than one of them. But the first one is to plan for all students returning in person. Some of the guidance, I'll just give you a few bullet points for each one of these three scenarios. Some of the guidance that has been provided to us is to create as much space between students and teachers as is feasible during the day if all students come back. So in other words, there's a little bit of a softening of some of the CDC guidelines and inability to literally bring back all students' activities and extracurricular programming. We can continue to follow the COVID-19 prevention guidance for youth, students, and childcare programs, and the scenario may be implemented if the state metrics for COVID-19 continue to stabilize and/or improve. And again, these will be decisions that will be made by the governor and state departments, and that we would anticipate that we would get some pretty concrete guidance by the end of the month, but possibly a few ankles or insights as early as this Wednesday, or there's a possibility that we might get an update from the governor without specifically indicating which of these scenarios would be implemented. So that's the first one. I think it's, you know, probably the ideal scenario, what everybody would love, how realistic that is. I don't know. I think, given current data, it's probably unlikely that that would evolve for the start of the school year, at least. Scenario two is a hybrid model, kind of a combination of all kids back and all kids distance learning. A few of the guidelines are rules, if you will, that we would need to follow on that would be to limit the overall number of people in school facilities and on transportation vehicles by 50%, while at the same time following CDC guidelines and other guidance and expectations provided by the state, which those two things don't necessarily align or match up, because 50% is not, in some cases, for example, on school buses, even possible to accommodate 50% on the buses and follow that six-foot social distancing rule. So there's some discrepancies here that with time, I would imagine, we'll get some greater direction on maintaining social distancing of six feet. That's sort of become the magic number that we've all become acquainted with and familiar with in regard to the amount of distance to be kept between individuals. If distancing can't be achieved in the space, as I mentioned before, on a transportation vehicle, then the number of occupants would need to be reduced. I think, following the guidelines, you could probably get about 13 kids, I think we heard today, from our transportation director on a school bus, following those CDC guidelines. So they have a rated capacity of 70 to 75 kids, elementary kids, probably maybe not high school kids, but so you could see that that would be a significant decrease in the number of students that could be on a bus. Continuing plans for provision of meals, as we've spoken about and that we've done in the spring, our Culinary Express team did a great job, phenomenal job of providing meals, and that would continue under the hybrid model. The scenario could be implemented if metrics worsen at the local, regional, or statewide level. So this is kind of in between the ideal and the metric readings that would be indicating an increase in infections of COVID-19. And then the scenario may also be implemented within a school if they experience clusters of cases within a classroom or the school. So one of the interesting things is with these options, is it sort of presented as a real flexible option for school districts and across the state. I think there will be some general guidance, but they haven't ruled out the possibility of some greater flexibility, that districts might look different depending on what the metrics in the local district might look like. And in fact, I haven't seen anything that would even rule out, and I think were some subtle suggestions that may be even within a district, much like we may have had done back in the H1N1 days about a decade ago. I know there was some tracking within buildings, and if there was a certain threshold that was crossed, some different mechanisms may have been put in place. So I think we're going to learn a lot more about that during the coming year, or in the coming weeks prior to the start of the school year, in regard to how much flexibility is going to be built in there. But I do hope that we get good guidance from the state with expectations on how they would be looking for us to move forward. And then the final scenario is essentially what we've just been doing the last two to three months with distance learning, where we would implement the distance learning programs and protocols like we did in the spring with enhancements or improvements based on the survey feedback that we've gotten at the state as well as within our local community. So those are the three scenarios. So again, scenario one, in-person learning for all students. Scenario two, hybrid learning with strict social distancing and capacity limits. And scenario three, distance learning only, which is the model that we just finished up on. So I indicated or hinted at, by the end of July, we're anticipating that the governor and state departments will be providing guidance or directives, direction on which of these three scenarios they will be looking for us to implement, with the possibility of some additional guidance maybe coming given as soon as this week. There's ongoing opportunities to engage with MDE and MDH. There's regular briefings and press, press briefings and press releases that maybe some of you watch. They're typically in the afternoon, I think about 2 o'clock, and those have been really helpful, and they've provided a number of helpful opportunities to engage with questions and learn more about their current line of thinking. And then it's possible that, as I indicated before, that there could be some flexibility around the state, even within school districts or metro communities. And districts may choose to implement strategies that are more restrictive than the state comes out with, but not allowed to implement restrictions that are less than what the state comes out with. So those are some of the things related to the three scenarios. And then I just wanted to also highlight that underneath each one of those scenarios, and it looks like about a 15-page document, there are required health practices and recommended health practices. So again, some things that in any given scenario, those required health practices would need to be implemented. And I think I have probably shared the full document with you, or you've seen links through professional organizations or other distribution lists. You kind of have some familiarity, I think, with the larger documents. And again, the one that we've focused on to start with, at least for the early planning, has been more the MDH document, because it's a little more operationally focused, I think. So that combination of required and recommended practices. Just to give you an idea of the categories where we've received guidance, I'll just share these and maybe make a comment or two about them. But there's a COVID-19 Program Coordinator, kind of a district-wide person, or point person for that, is Dr. Johnson, who's our Executive Director of Teaching and Learning. She convenes our planning meetings, and you know, it's kind of a team, team effort. I'm working closely with her on that, as well as our other administrative staff. So she helps put the agenda together and convenes the meetings, but really, it's really a group venture, and I think the team is going to operate really well together. Other headers or categories are bringing logistics or protocols for social distancing and minimizing exposure between students, making determinations about cloth face coverings, protecting vulnerable populations, hygiene practices, cleaning and materials handling, monitoring and excluding for illness. In other words, if students or staff become ill, how we be sure that we're monitoring and making appropriate exclusions for students or staff that should not be at the site, handling suspected or confirmed positive cases of COVID-19, tending to water and ventilation systems to ensure that they're functioning well and that we're getting good air exchange and control within the buildings, transportation, which I think will be a real challenge to figure out how we're going to be transporting students, and also tending to best practices for supporting mental health and wellness of our students. So those are some of the key headers that were included in the health-related document. And I've mentioned that we have what we're calling a school reopening leadership team. So the name is pretty self-evident, what it's working on. And we met today, and we have five more meetings that are scheduled in July. So those meetings will kind of be flying in sync with, and we will have had opportunities to process and think through a number of things by the time we get a little tighter guidance from the state at the end of the month. And in the meantime, individual buildings and program supervisors and leaders will be working with their teams, talking about the what-ifs as we learn more about the expectations, and we talk more about things that we need to be focusing on and working on. There will be a lot of work, obviously, that will be done outside of the larger committee meetings or formal committee meetings. And through that, we'll also be hearing and considering the feedback that we've gotten from our staff and from our community on the surveys that we submitted. We had an overview of that at today's meeting from Stacy Lackner, our Director of Research and Evaluation in the district, and she provided us with general themes. We'll likely give some kind of a presentation at our work session in a couple of weeks as well, so that you have a better chance to become more acquainted with that information and ask more questions at that time. Plus, we'll know more by that time as well. But I think we got off, you know, to a good start with that, and as we learn more and incorporate and think about what we learned in distance learning this past spring, and what a hybrid version might look like, I'm confident in the team we've assembled. It's broad-based across a number of departments. We have a number of teachers that are involved. Corey Knudsen, our new WEA president, is a part of the team and a lot of our administrative leaders. So that's kind of a quick overview. I wanted to give Dr. Johnson an opportunity to fill in all the likely gaps that I overlooked or didn't share information about. If there's anything else, Jill, that you would want to share, feel free to do so at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Good evening, board members. I don't have a lot to add. We do have our leadership team, as Dr. Anderson referred to. It's 41 members. Forty-one people are on it, so it's a pretty large team, but it's representation from across the district, from executive staff to building principals, to health services, Wayzetta Education Association, all of our bargaining units, buildings and grounds, transportation, administrative services. It's everybody. We've got a, it's a large group and a lot of people on a Zoom meeting. But today was our first meeting, and really, the purpose of today's meeting was to kind of ground everyone in the same information, so that we're all operating from this, kind of the same platform, I guess. So Stacy Lackner did review our surveys with us, and that was very, very, very helpful. We also had just lengthy presentations from Dawn Wilson, our Health Services Supervisor, Jim Westrom, John Deutsch, Rich Inga around transportation and facilities, Stacy Voss around HR. Just a lot of, a lot of information to get our head around. Tomorrow, I'm meeting with the Elementary Principal Group, Middle School Principal Group also, to just kind of understand, what did we hear today? What might that look like in terms of a potential learning model? We don't want to get too far out ahead of our skis until we have more information from the governor. On the other hand, we don't think we can sit back and do nothing at this point. And so we're, we're just taking what we've learned, and with the three scenarios that Dr. Anderson shared, what might learning look like, and how will we deliver from that? We also heard from Michelle Segadall in our culinary also. So we got a lengthy presentation. And so our next step is to take that information, start doing something with it, get more information from the governor, and use that as part of our planning, and then use the larger leadership team meetings to really vet those proposals to make sure that they are, you know, educationally responsible and acceptable to our community. So we've got day one out of the way and several more ahead of us.
Thanks, Jill. Another area that I didn't mention that we'll be able to learn a lot from are the group of individuals we just recognized from our childcare programming. They've been working with children in classrooms for a number of months now, and we've gained a lot of insights from that. We also have a summer school program happening this summer, but that's primarily distance learning. But I believe they're responding to and implementing some of the things that we learned as well from the spring that hopefully we'll have an opportunity to learn more from. I'm hearing informally in regard to our summer school or summer childcare programs and other enrichment camps that are happening, that they're going quite well this summer, and that we continue to learn from those things, or those programs that are in place currently, and that will be a helpful informational gathering opportunity as well. And although I didn't give Jenny's any forewarning on this, Jenny, if you have anything that you would want to share about summer programming and things you're learning or things you're doing, feel free to share a few thoughts if you'd like to.
Yeah, thanks, Chase. You know, I've been thinking a lot about this after our meeting today, what are those key things that might be helpful to share as we plan for the fall? And there are a number of really small items that I think will be really interesting as we move through, like the thermometers seem to wear out after a month, and two masks a day isn't enough. And you know, even the demand that parents think that they want or need at one point in time can really shift really quickly, depending on what's happening in our community. So I think, you know, it can be broader realizations is the last thing I've talked about to the smaller ones of just, you know, those things that'll help us prepare to order more thermometers or to order more masks as we move into this. But those are the things that I'm working with my staff to really pay careful attention to and share. Hillary Dish has been invited to be part of that school reopening group and is making note of all of those, those types of things that we hope that we can, we can share. Other pieces that I've debriefed with Hillary on is just around helping staff feel comfortable if we are able to come back and do hybrid or in-person learning, you know, back in March, and again, this summer, as we brought staff back onto site. You know, there's a lot of unease on what does that mean to be here, especially if you've been in your house maybe for a lot of this time. if you've, you've been in your house maybe for a lot of this time, or haven't socialized outside of a small circle of people. And just some of the lessons learned on what does that mean to, kind of help staff work through that piece of it. And everyone's doing great now, but it, you know, there can be challenges in that, on that front end. So we'll do, we'll do a lot more thinking on this and continue to share as we do our planning.
Thanks, Jenny. I know we had other team members present here at the board meeting that were at our meeting today and have been doing a lot of work on this. If anyone else has anything to share, feel free and/or Adam Chair and any other members, if you have any questions for me or other members of our team, we do our best to respond to those now, too.
All right, great. Thanks for that update.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'd like to give board members an opportunity to ask questions or make comments. I'll just go down the list. Lynda Cohen, any comments or questions?
Well, my comment is, thanks for all the hard work that you're already doing and all the very hard work that's ahead. I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
Cian Falconer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you to the staff that is running WISEZETI Kids right now. And for those of us who have kids who are in the summer school program, we're also at WISEZETI Kids, bringing the additional benefit of trained educators walking our kids through e-learning, which is the best thing ever. I also want to say thank you to that staff who included in the last email a request that parents, when they're dropping off and picking up their students, to also wear masks. I really appreciate that. And as a parent, I always wore a mask because I wanted to protect our staff, who I'm so grateful for who are wearing those. My, I do have one question in addition to my compliments. I believe it's probably to Dr. Johnson, combo with Dr. Anderson. Knowing that we're about nine weeks away from the beginning of school, and we've all seen different messages from parents as well as from members of our community, do you have a date in mind that you're working back from that say, this is when we're going to make a decision, whether the state comes out with guidance or not, so that you and your teams have enough time?
Yeah, maybe I'll start with that one. I think it is a little bit fluid yet at this point. To pick a specific date, I think would be a real challenge for us. I think after Wednesday of this week, we may have a better indicator of what the intent will be from the governor and state departments in regard to what that message of the week of July 27th might look like. And what we want to be able to do is to really put a lot of energy into the hybrid version. We think that'll be the most difficult to design and the most difficult to implement. So we're trying to think in terms of all of the what-ifs around that, and that's what we're going to be spending the remainder of July doing, is really trying to think that through. We think modifications of the distance learning plan from the last spring can be made that will strengthen that and make it even stronger than, than it was with the program that we developed on relatively short notice. And if all students are allowed to come back, because the numbers plummet in regard to number of infections and other metric numbers that they're tracking, it'll be a matter of doing our best to implement those guidelines based on what MDH and MDE provide to us. So there's not a specific date in there. I don't know that I can give one. Early August would, you know, in the first week or two of August, I would like to think, because time will really be clicking then in regard to the amount of days left before the start of the school year. We're a little bit fortunate in that Labor Day is a little deeper into September this year. I think maybe September 6th or 7th, I can't remember specifically. So that buys us a little bit of extra time to plan and, and be responsive to whatever the challenges may be with implementing our game plan. But I would say early August would seem to be, you know, an opportunity for us to at least provide an update with a few of the specifics as we see them on that day. But as we've all learned, this not only changes monthly, but it changes weekly and daily sometimes. And, you know, we're going to have to just really be agile and responsive to the best of our ability. I hope that was helpful. Jill, anything else?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No, I've, great answer.
All right. Thanks, Cian. Any questions or comments from Sarah Johansson?
Hello. Thank you all. Thanks, Dr. Anderson. Thanks, Dr. Johnson. Thanks, team. This is a huge, this is a huge lift, but we have amazing minds on this. So thank you for that. I do have two questions. And so I'll ask them both one may. I might know the answer to one. But the first is, you know, as the governor has, has given some indication that this may be a regional thing, or, you know, that, that it could be more locally concentrated. And, and now we're hearing conversations from the session about having it be even closer to local control. I'm wondering where in your journey, I know we have a lot to do within our own district, but where in your journey are you connecting with, like, our neighboring districts? And so, you know, trying to get a feel for, you know, it's what are Robbinsdale, Lassio, kind of the, the people that touch our borders that we may be connected to? That's the first question, is the role of inter-district kind of communication from a local central area? And then the second question is one that I've gotten from a couple people. Regardless, if we get to the hybrid scenario and/or the in-person scenario, are we also working on something that will allow for a purely distance learning option for our students and families who are more medically fragile, or, you know, really just feel strongly that they don't want to go back, even if we're there? Will that, will some sort of, it seems pretty logistically huge, but will that be an option?
Yeah, I'll start out with your first question. So there are a number of small groups that have evolved organically or been organized by some of our state leadership organizations. There are some AMSD superintendents that have come together to have discussions. Today, I was part of a meeting of the regional mayor's council, where mayors and representative superintendents from those communities did a Zoom meeting today, and we shared where we were at and some of the thoughts that we had and how we can work in tandem with city governments and, and other strategic partners within communities. And, you know, there's just a lot of collegiality among superintendents and other staff. For example, I'm sure Mr. Westrom's in communication with other business and finance directors, and Dr. Johnson with teaching and learning personnel. And Jenny, I know, has been in communication with community education persons. We learn a lot informally, as well as along with those formal meetings. But we spend quite a lot of time together, mostly Zooming now, obviously, and we have been for a number of months. There's a lot of people any of us can reach out to and learn more. And, you know, we hear things through the grapevine and think, oh, I want to learn more about that. I wonder if they're going to pull that off. And, and, you know, we can have some of those kind of informal engagements and connections as well. So I, I think there will be a lot of opportunities with that, a lot of opportunities for sharing and learning. And I think there's some consensus that the most challenging scenario to implement is going to be this hybrid version, but it's also where some great opportunity lies. It's really an opportunity for us to give consideration to how can we improve our ability to be responsive to the unique needs of our students in ways that we haven't probably done before. And short of a crisis, you don't necessarily find the way forward to challenge yourself with finding some new ways. So that's how I would share that. I hope that answers your first question. I think there will be a lot of opportunities for engagement and many more to come. I think for most superintendents, district staff, principals, I mean, this is going to be the primary mission to fly this summer, really, to, to work hard on this. I mean, this is really kind of finding its way into everybody's workload and work schedules for the summer month, not only in our district, but every district, I think. And then with the second question, I believe in the MDE 100-page document, I recall reading somewhere that great flexibility should be exercised for those who are students that are not comfortable coming back and providing distance learning opportunities and options. There could be some medically fragile students, those who live in homes with medically fragile parents or grandparents or siblings. So those are all things that I think we're going to need to really find a way to be responsive through a number of delivery venues to the best of our ability. That's somewhat of a new arena for us to really provide a multifaceted instructional delivery model where there would be that combination. But because we've now had experience with distance learning, you know, we've got some new tools in our toolkit with that. And we'll have to figure out from a staffing perspective and through our HR department with principals, who does what if we have some students that are on a hybrid version and some students that are on a full-distance learning version, how we differentiate our staffing to help ensure that, you know, we maintain reasonable workloads and that we're responsive to what student needs might be. So I hope that answered question number two. And others, some of the administrative team may have insights or thoughts that I left out or, or didn't, didn't accurately portray. Feel free to add or correct me. No one wants to add or correct?
No additions or corrections. All right. Thanks. Next, Chris McCullough, do you have any questions or comments?
No, no questions. Just a huge thank you, as my board colleagues have already said, Chase and your entire team. I, I can't imagine how tough it's got to be to develop three playbooks and not knowing what's, you know, door one, door two, or door three, what's going to be chosen. So yeah, my hat's off to the ongoing great work that you're doing. So thank you.
Thank you for that. And all of us on our administrative team have seen a lot of things in our day. This one's sort of a whole category of planning and preparedness. And that's going to challenge our best creativity. So thank you for that.
Thanks, Chris. Next, Cheryl, any questions?
I think so. So kind of tagging on to that door one, door two, door three thing, do you anticipate it being just one versus the other? Or do you sort of imagine that we might need to toggle between one and the other? And that's why we're being sort of asked to prepare all three, so that depending upon, you know, the situation on the ground, so to speak, as things go like this, as we've seen the numbers go up and down and whatnot, would we need to flip a switch and implement something for a few weeks? And then even, like you had mentioned, maybe one building might be in a situation where we might need to turn on door two when everybody else is on door three? Or what, what's your conversation around that, I guess?
Yeah, I'd be happy to respond to that. I think we should expect that that's going to be the case. I, I don't think we're going to choose a scenario and then expect to live with it for the entire year. I think there's just too many unknowns and uncertainties with this. And we're all exposed to enough media where we see numbers, you know, like a roller coaster, literally, in individual states or communities. In fact, I noticed today that I think Minnesota, on one map version, dark red shows a significant increase in cases. And Minnesota was dark red today, whereas yesterday it was goldenrod, which means it was stable. So I don't know how they determine those metrics or what the percentage increase is. But we see that in all states, really, when you look at that color-coded map on where the, the hotspots are, so to speak. It changes, you know, every day. It's different. And I think we're going to need to be flexible. And, you know, it's been a long time ago, but about a decade ago, when we were dealing with the H1N1, I know that we're tracking building by building and ready to make determinations, much like the, the common flu or influenza virus as well. You know, we've all heard of buildings closing because X percent of the students in that building went over the breakpoint or the, the metric that would cause a building to close. So I could envision that that could be a possible part of our protocol. I think the thing that's so different with this is we don't have a lot of history with it. We really don't know how it behaves or how it's going to mutate or evolve. And, you know, maybe what some of the long-term considerations or concerns are. So this one really is a very unique virus that is behaving similarly to some of the other coronaviruses, but yet it has a lot of unique features with a lot of unknowns and uncertainty. But I think agility and being nimble are going to be new ways of life. And we're going to have to do our very best to be ready for any of those three scenarios. As I indicated, we've been pretty good at onsite learning for decades, and we've learned a lot about full-distance learning in the last three to four months. And that's why I think the hybrid version will be the most challenging for us, because what will work maybe for student A might be totally different than what will work well for student B. And we're going to have to find some new degrees of flexibility and ways of being responsive to unique needs of students. So that was a long answer where I could have probably just said, yes, I would anticipate we will need extreme agility.
Okay. And, and then sort of related to what Sarah had asked about students, and what about our staff? Are we keeping in mind accommodations for those staff who might have fragile health concerns? Or, you know, and are we doing anything to, I don't know, try and match them up? Or I, what are you doing in that arena, I guess?
Yep. I'll, I'll start this one off. Stacy might want to be thinking about a few inputs because I know she's been working nonstop around not only this topic, but a number of them related to human resources and how to be responsive, not only to the unique needs of our students, but also to our staff. So I will start it off just by saying absolutely that will be a big part of the work that we're doing within our team. And as we give consideration to opening up the school year, we will have different needs as an organization, and staff members will have different needs based on some of their own unique characteristics or concerns or considerations that we'll need to keep in, keep in mind. Those actually could end up matching up fairly well, because we're going to have a need for some distance learning staff. And, you know, hopefully, a need for some staff on site who, you know, we can have engaging directly with their students. So Stacy, do you have more insight or anything that you would like to share with the, the board with that?
I think you summarized it very nicely. But just to echo what Chase is saying, we definitely want to work with all of our employees. We have asked, you know, today during the leadership meeting, we just asked that if they are getting those requests where we have employees fearful of coming back to work, to let HR know. And we're going to work with them. And, and as you said, trying to match people up and just really do our best to meet everyone where they're at. And at the end of the day, you know, our overall goal in HR is to make sure that people feel that they were cared for and supported throughout all of this craziness, and that we end up getting people in good spots to do good things for kids.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? No. I, I won't take up any more time, but I do want to echo everybody else's thank you. It's just my gratitude and admiration is off the charts for all the work that everybody's doing. So thank you.
And Cheryl? All right. Next, Bonita, any questions or comments?
Just one question and definitely comment, just echoing everyone else. Well, thank you so very much for all that you're doing. I think the, the question that I have, and Cheryl kind of touched on it a little bit regarding staff, when you think about any of these three options, and it may still just be too early to know what to tell, do you have any concerns with janitorial, custodial, housekeeping in order to keep up with, because of COVID, there's so much more of the wiping down, the cleanings, and those kind of things? Do you have any concerns with not enough people, those types of things?
Yeah, maybe I'll start with that one and then ask Mr. Westrom maybe to fill in any gaps, or his boss also to share any insights you may have with that. But I know if John Deutsch were here, our supervisor of Buildings and Grounds, he would respond with a high confidence level of our Buildings and Grounds staff and our ability to maintain our buildings. I will say unequivocally that they're the best I've ever worked with anywhere. I think they're top-notch. They're well-informed, well-trained, they know protocols. We've had good systems in place always, but they've increased the frequency within which the cleaning's been occurring. So I think that they're really well-positioned with that. If we do toggle into a hybrid version, one of the realities of that will will be possibly during the course of the week carving out some time. I've heard different scenarios. Some districts are considering a Monday, Tuesday cycle for some students, a Thursday, Friday cycle for the other half of the students and a Wednesday would be deep cleaning in the building and more individual engagement. Perhaps there's zooming with teachers and students and other types of work that would look different than maybe the A or B day that would be developed. So that would provide an opportunity for additional cleaning. There's been some talk about a modified day. We have a late start. So those might be models that we take a look at. So there'd be a shortened day providing more time before school or after school for cleaning. Probably some weekend work that could be considered. But you know, all those things certainly will be on the priority list and we'll continue to take a look at how can we ensure that we're doing all that we can to maximize cleanliness in the building? Some of the recent things I've heard from epidemiologists, including our own local Dr. Osterholm is that this particular virus tends to have a very short life cycle on hard surfaces. So that's kind of a newer input, I think, that's been coming out. So you know, if anyone wants to look for any good news within any of this set of circumstances, that would probably be a slight win, at least in its current form. But I don't know if Jim or Stacy have anything else that they would like to share, but those are a few thoughts that come to mind for me.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is Jim. I'll just make a couple of remarks. While our educators were getting ready to continue to deliver on our mission of educating, John Deutsch and his team have been looking at best practices on how to address our facilities. One thing that you can be proud of is we're 98% as far as complete with our indoor air quality. So we have, we have to get investments. So that provides a high level of confidence that our buildings are gonna have the cleanliness that we need and the airflow that we need. We're working closely with our partners on our cleaning protocols. We wanted to make sure we didn't run out of cleaners. We wanted to make sure that we have the appropriate cleaners. And actually cleaning the school is a lot more complex or cleaning a public institution is a lot more complex than most people would think. So John shared most of that information today and I'm sure you'll learn more about it in the future. But I think just to echo what Chase said, you can go have a high level of confidence that our facilities will be in tip-top shape for our students, staff and others. Stacy, do you have any remarks?
I really don't have too much to add other than, you know, we're looking at with three different scenarios utilizing staff differently. And so we're really trying to, as Chase talked about, be agile and to be flexible. And if we need additional custodial support, how do we take current staff members who maybe aren't engaged with what they were hired for at the moment because of kids being at home? Or if we did a hybrid model, their responsibilities may lessen. How do we then take the time that they're not engaged in their normal duties and allow them to continue to support the school district and engage in different ways? I can't say more beyond that because I don't know what our plans look like specifically. But we're already engaging in conversations with our bargaining units to see how we can move forward if those scenarios play out and how we just continue to support each other to get our work done. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everyone. I just have one last question. I think a handful of people in this meeting had the opportunity to attend the National Urban Alliance Conference at the end of June. And I think that something I learned is that it's really important for us at this time as we're doing our planning to continue to focus on racial equity and continue to focus on how we can close the achievement gap. I guess my question is, are there ways that the school reopening leadership team is making sure that they're considering an equity lens when they're making decisions for fall?
I'll start with that. Maybe Dr. Johnson can add as well, but you know, that's an ongoing and that's an ongoing effort of ours and interest to help ensure that we will make every effort to ensure that students, if we are in a distance learning model again, or in a hybrid version, that again, students have the technology systems they need and the wifi that's gonna be important to remain connected to our teachers. One of the things that I'd like to see with the revised or modified distance or hybrid version is to expand the interconnectivity between our staff and our students and ensuring that those meaningful relationships can continue to be developed and that we find out from our individual students what their unique needs might be and their families. And that was one thing that we continue to hear from students and parents is they just really missed the engagement, not only with student peers, but also with students and their teachers to the level that they enjoy when they're in school. So for many of our students of color, it's a high focus area for us to ensure that we maximize those opportunities to make sure that our students are staying in connection with the teachers that they're getting all of the support and assistance that they might need in addition to what they might get from the normal protocols that we put in place for distance learning. That'll be an area that I think across the board that we'll continue to focus on is how do we bring more of that relationship building and ensuring that we fully understand what each student needs in order to be successful. So Dr. Johnson or others, maybe you might have a few thoughts as well.
Thanks, Dr. Anderson. I would just, I would just add that there is a very high interest amongst our staff around racial equity. And that in itself is refreshing that, you know, we're not having to lead anybody to water. They're going on their own. So and so while we're providing a lot of framework and just structure, things are really Solva has done a great job and we're working just very, very hard to provide the professional development and and resources that'll be available to staff. And you know, we want to have a rapid response when students are struggling, whether academically or emotionally this school year. We don't ever feel like we have the time to wait, but we really don't have the time now. So we want to be able to respond quickly to student needs. And like I said, there's just so much interest amongst the staff. And like I said, that in itself is such a big step forward that I don't think people are as inclined to sit back and say, well, you know, why isn't that you know, child doing what they're supposed to be doing or they're not doing what they're supposed to do to be successful? I think our teachers are much more in a mindset of being very proactive on helping students immediately and getting them the resources that they need to be, to be successful. So I feel like we're in the, now starting my 11th year here in a real different place in terms of mindset, but also in terms of structure that we really do have a structure in place now to support the desire on the part of the staff to be able to learn and to have usable skills that could make a difference for our students.
Great. Thank you so much. While we were talking, did anyone think of any more questions or comments? I want to make sure we get all our questions answered. Okay, thanks, everyone. I appreciate all the great questions, all the great answers, all the great work. I think the hardest work is yet to come, but I have high confidence in our team and I thank you so much for your work.
Thank you. It'll be a busy summer.
Yeah, no doubt. All right. Next on our agenda, we have teaching and learning. Dr. Johnson, our agenda item is to approve the 2019-2020 actual school days calendar. Did you want to make a couple of comments about that?
Just that we're required to do this and to submit it to MDE to make sure that if this was the calendar that the board adopted, we actually did implement it, correct? And so that's what the purpose of this is. So we submit this to the Department of Education. We didn't have any significant changes in terms of the number of days that students were engaged in learning. They were obviously shifted from being in class to distance learning. But typically our students have 172 days approximately because we chose to start our distance learning on that Monday and Tuesday, March 16th and 17th before the statewide distance learning went into effect. Those are two days that we removed as student contact days. Otherwise, all the other days remained. And you can see on the calendar how they break out by grade level, but above approximately 170 days, students were receiving instruction as opposed to the typically 172 days.
All right, thanks. The recommended action is to approve the actual school days calendar for 2019-2020 as presented in attachment in your board materials. Could I get a motion to approve?
This is Sarah. I so move.
This is Linda, second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? Could the clerk please call the roll?
Sarah Johansson.
Yes.
Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Chris McCullough.
Yes.
Cian Falconer.
Yes.
Cheryl Pozine.
Yes.
Bonita Lucky, yes. Andrea Keen.
Yes, the motion carries unanimously. I apologize, I forgot to go through the list for discussion. I'll do that for the rest. All right, next on our agenda. We have finance and business services. Welcome, Mr. Westrom. Do you have some comments about our monthly financial reports?
Madam Chair and members of the board, this month, actually after what we've just gone through over the last 90 days, these are normally interesting things that I present, but now they seem to be routine. So the first item is our monthly financial reports. And typically what we do is we provide information on the financial revenues and expenditures and compare those to the budget. And then we also provide information on our investments and we analyze the financial report. So within your packet, you'll notice that we do have an analysis of the financial reports through May 31st, 2020. And of course, with a little disruption with the distance learning and the fact that we saw a reduction in fee revenue, everything basically is still looking to be coming in with, within what we anticipate. A couple of items you'll notice is our purchase services are down and some of the other contracted services are down. However, due to the fact that students weren't on our campuses and staff weren't on their campuses, you'll probably note that our construction costs are accelerating slightly. So these are all positive things considering the circumstances. I would also like to mention that it will be a slightly different process of going through year end. We anticipate that the food service fund, culinary express expenses and revenues as well as the community service fund will come in slightly different than budget. And however, once again, a reminder that we did significant cost containment. We didn't need to heat the buildings. We didn't need to provide transfer. So we should see some offsetting savings as well. So with that, if there are any questions, no action is required at this point.
All right. Thanks for the explanation, Mr. Westrom. Are there any questions or comments? All right, hearing none. We'll move on to the next agenda item.
Yes, and I might just make one additional comment. You're probably aware that the district is on sound financial footing. We have a triple A bond rating from the rating company. And I did share with the finance committee last Friday that actually we'll be going under a surveillance interview next week. And once again, we feel like our financial situation is quite strong considering everything that's going on. So I want to just give you that quick heads up. The remaining seven items, I've asked both Kristen Towson and Jill Swent to attend this evening. I may ask Kristen Towson to make a few remarks. But recall, you may recall, last July, on July 8th, 2019, the board approved your strategic roadmap and that set the mission, vision, core values and strategic directions of the district and it guides our work. You're quite often familiar with Jonathan and others making remark about the programs of the district. But it also applies to some of the infrastructure in the district as well. So you're gonna see a number of items here that are in alignment with the district's strategic roadmap and will position the district well in the future. So the first item is the agenda item, which is an authorization to, whoops, I better look in. I'll look at the agenda sheet. authorize the executive director of finance and business or superintendent to sign a purchase agreement on behalf of the district to acquire property in the city of Medina. You're probably aware that just at our last work session, the school board had the opportunity to hear about the comprehensive facility study. And a number of needs have been identified. So the district administration has identified a property consisting of a building and land in Medina that would serve the district's facility needs, including storage and bus parking. The facility committee of the board has discussed the acquisition of the property and guided us. And the finance committee has also discussed this. The school board authorized the executive director of finance and business services to enter into negotiations for purchasing the property. The seller and the district have arrived at mutually agreeable terms and the district's legal counsel is preparing the purchase agreement in working with Kristen Towson as well. Legal counsel recommends that the school board authorize the executive director of finance and business or superintendent to sign a purchase agreement on behalf of the district to acquire this building and land in Medina subject to terms that are acceptable to the district's legal counsel and meet the district's requirements and parameters that have been discussed with each of those committees. The acquisition of this property would be financed by current operating capital and a reimbursement resolution previously approved by the school board would allow the district to seek appropriate financing within the next 24 months. So with that, the recommended action is before you, and if you have any questions, either Kristen or myself will be happy to respond.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Westrom. The recommended action is to authorize the executive director of finance and business or the superintendent to sign a purchase agreement on behalf of the district to acquire property in the city of Medina. Is there a motion to approve?
Cheryl Pozine, I move to approve.
Thank you. All right, we've got a motion in a second. Is there any discussion from Linda Cohen?
No discussion.
Okay, Cian Falconer.
Yes, question. Thank you for that presentation, Mr. Westrom. I understand that the price has been discussed and as it is currently pending, I understand that you're unable to share it at this time. But my question is more along the lines of you indicated there'd be paid for by current operating capital. Is this capital that already exists that's not dependent on future revenues or taxes? I'm just wondering in this time of more financial uncertainty, where the funding for this would be coming from?
Yes, Madam Chair, Director Falconer. Typically, when the district has purchased property, we, other than when it's been voter approved property, we have not had a funding source identified specifically. A reimbursement resolution is a tool that allows the school district to find a funding source up to two years. So for instance, if we were, the Oakwood addition was financed by certificates of participation. And at that point, we already owned the property. So then we went ahead and found the funding source to go ahead and finance not only the property, but the improvements. So at this point, it's premature to know what type of improvements we would want to make to the property. So at this point, we basically are keeping the options open for the board and administration to determine how best to utilize the property. The property is in a really good usable condition for storage and for potentially parking buses and other equipment. But there may be other uses that the board and the administration may find useful. So typically, probably have seen this happen. For instance, even just this year, we received $6.2 million in proceeds from the sale of land that the district had done a similar situation from. So we basically borrowed the money from ourselves and it represents more of a cash flow matter than a fund balance or financial resource matter. That might be a little bit more complex and might require some additional. That might be a little bit more complex and might require some additional discussion. But at this point, this has been routine in this district, believe it or not, although it is rather unusual.
Thank you, Mr. Westrom. I think I have a better understanding. You've been able to allay my concerns that our current financial position as a district will hold us in good stead through this negotiation and purchase.
That is correct.
All right, thanks, Deanne. Any questions or comments or questions, discussion, sorry, from Sarah Johansson?
No questions, just a thank you. I know that the Facilities Committee has been working with Jim and Kristen Towson to look over this and pay some close attention and to check it out. So thanks, colleagues, for checking it out. Thanks, Kristen, for helping us to find this. It's, this journey to a bus garage has been long. So it's exciting that we have something that's maybe a really good thing.
Thanks, all right. Any discussion from Chris McCullough?
Just two logistics questions, if you know and maybe you don't yet. What would be the timing of the transaction? Like, when would we take possession of this? And then the other question is, with respect to bus parking, would this accommodate all buses? Or would it be the only bus parking, if you will, that we would need to have?
Madam Chair, Director McCullough, I'll start out and then I'll pass it to Kristen. You're probably aware that we currently lease a bus garage as a part of an antitrust settlement in Plymouth. That site doesn't have adequate storage for buses. And later in this meeting this evening, we'll also ask you to approve parking for drivers just due to the fact that that site is limited and has been in existence and serving the district for probably decades. So you're also probably aware that we currently store about thirty buses up at the high school in a parking lot adjacent to the turf field. As the high school campus becomes more crowded, it's clearly going to be evident that those parking spots are going to be needed for the community. So we're anticipating that we would park some of our buses on the property that we're about to put an offer on or a purchase agreement on. And the closing is pretty aggressive after we do our due diligence. So I'll let Kristen talk about that.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, good evening, everybody. To Jim's point, yes, what this facility would allow for us is to minimize or eliminate the parking at the high school. It would afford us both indoor and some outdoor parking. And then, as Jim mentioned, it is a pretty aggressive timeline. But once we sign the purchase agreement, we have sixty days of due diligence where we would study the environmental impact or any other things that we would like to know more about, do title search and those type of things, and do a thorough view of the mechanical systems in the building, and then a closing within fifteen days. So in some range of about seventy-five to eighty days from, you know, at this point, whenever we sign the purchase agreement.
Thanks.
Yep, and I may just make one additional remark. Is that the board, in two weeks, we have another board meeting. The board will actually see the agreement at that point and approve it or ratify it.
Thanks, Jim and Kristen.
Thanks, all right. Any discussion from Cheryl Pousine?
It's a big thank you, well spotted.
All right. Any discussion from Bonita Lucky?
No discussion.
All right, none from me. So Bonita, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Bonita Lucky, yes. Cheryl Pousine.
Yes.
C N Falconer.
Yes.
Chris McCullough.
Yes.
Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Sarah Johansson.
Yes.
And Andrea King.
Yes, the motion carries unanimously. Thanks, everyone. All right, Jim, I'll turn it back over to you for the next item.
Yes, the next item is a action or a recommendation to authorize the Executive Director of Finance and Business or Superintendent to sign a purchase agreement on behalf of the district to acquire property in the city of Plymouth. And the district administration has identified a parcel of property adjacent to Plymouth Creek Elementary School. The Facility Committee of the Board has discussed this acquisition, as well as the Finance Committee. And the school board authorized the Executive Director of Finance and Business Services to enter in negotiations for purchasing the property. The seller and the district have arrived at mutually agreeable terms. And the district's legal counsel is preparing the purchase agreement. Legal counsel, once again, recommends that the school board authorize the Executive Director of Finance and Business or Superintendent to sign a purchase agreement on behalf of the district to acquire a parcel of land adjacent to Plymouth Creek Elementary School, subject to terms that are acceptable to the district's legal counsel and that meet the district's requirements. I'm going to ask Kristen to make a little, a few remarks about the process just to provide you with a high level of confidence about the use of this property being beneficial to the school district. But I also would like to mention that the acquisition of this property would be financed by two thousand and seventeen voter-approved bond proceeds that were designated specifically for improving site safety at the Plymouth Creek site. Kristen, would you like to make a few remarks?
Thank you, Jim. I did want to maybe provide a little more detail that this does involve another organization and they too will need to have a group that will vote and do some of the similar background work that you're doing. So we have, we have basic terms in place. But when, once you provide this go-ahead to us, then the other organization will provide, go-ahead to them. They'll finish up the final negotiations and create a purchase agreement. This is an area that, that, that school is very landlocked and would provide some options. We've even done some initial reach-out to the city of Plymouth to talk with them about reconfiguring kind of that whole area and even some of the park that is adjacent to the school. So the city of Plymouth is aware and on board and open to future discussions on how we might improve site.
Thank you, Kristen.
All right, great. The recommended action is to authorize the Executive Director of Finance and Business or the Superintendent to sign a purchase agreement on behalf of the district to acquire property in the city of Plymouth. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
This is Sarah Johansson, I so move.
Bonita Lucky, second.
All right, is there any discussion from Linda Cohen?
No discussion.
C N Falconer.
No discussion, thank you.
Sarah Johansson.
Just a couple things. So do we have any idea, Kristen, did you say this and I just missed it, when, so we approve this and then it goes back to, to their decision-makers for them to make a decision? Do we know what that timeline is for them to make their decision?
They, that organization will be having some discussions and some voting in July. So they too will then authorize their leadership to do some continuing negotiations with us. So we're kind of working in tandem. We do not have a hard horizon that we need to meet or a deadline that we need to meet. It's very mutually beneficial. It is, we are working very, warmly is not the right term in a business negotiation, but cooperatively to make sure that everyone is in a win-win kind of situation and that it's held, handled very softly or very, very strategically for both groups.
Thank you, and thank you so much for your work on that. There's such an important relationship with that space right now with the school and the, and the parents and the community that uses it. So it's, I can see where it's mutually beneficial and I just appreciate the district's care in moving this forward. So thanks so much.
Great, any discussion from Chris McCullough?
No, no discussion.
Cheryl Pousine.
No, but thank you again, well spotted, again.
Bonita Lucky.
No discussion.
All right, could the clerk please call the roll?
Sarah Johansson.
Yes.
Cheryl Pousine.
Yes.
Linda Cohen.
Yes.
C N Falconer.
Yes.
Chris McCullough.
Yes.
Bonita Lucky, yes. Andrea King.
Yes, the motion carries unanimously. Thanks, everyone. All right, back to Jim.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. The next item is an action authorizing the Executive Director of Finance and Business to enter into a joint powers agreement between the district and the city of Plymouth. And basically, the district has completed improvements on a portion of the former Elm Creek Golf Course that was approved by voters in two thousand and fourteen. As addition, as a condition of acquiring the property and improving the property for the high school people's, it was agreed that the district would cooperate with the city to provide access to the Wayzata High School campus to neighborhoods west of the school. I know that there's a lot of information in here. I'm going to refrain from going into that. But once again, this has been discussed in great detail with the Finance Committee, as well as the Facility Committee of the Board. And just another note is the district has similar agreements with adjacent neighborhoods. And those agreements didn't require a joint powers agreement because it was a part of the approval process when we built Northwoods and when we built Meadow Ridge. So legal counsel recommends that the school board authorize the Executive Director of Finance and Business to sign the joint powers agreement. And at this point, Kristen has indicated to me that the terms are acceptable and it will be going to their governing council later this month. So with that, the recommended action is before you. And Kristen would be happy to respond to any questions.
All right, the recommended action is to authorize the Executive Director of Finance and Business to enter into a joint powers agreement between the district and the city of Plymouth. Could I get a motion to approve?
Linda Cohen, I so move.
Cheryl Pousine, second.
All right, thank you. Is there any discussion from Linda Cohen?
No discussion, thanks.
C N Falconer.
No discussion, thank you.
Sarah Johansson.
No question, thanks.
Chris McCullough.
No discussion.
Cheryl Pousine.
No discussion, thank you.
Bonita Lucky.
No discussion, thank you.
All right, could the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, C N Falconer.
Yes.
Chris McCullough.
Yes.
Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Sarah Johansson.
Yes.
Bonita Lucky, yes. Cheryl Pousine.
Yes.
Andrea King.
Yes, the motion carries unanimously. All right, I'll pass it back to Mr. Westrom.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. We briefly talked on this, discussed this. But the next item authorizes the Executive Director of Finance and Business to renew a lease agreement with Miller LLC Thirty-Second Avenue. And as we spoke a little bit earlier, the district currently leases a bus garage in Plymouth. And the Plymouth Bus Garage is limited on space. It can only hold either buses or the driver's vehicles, but it cannot hold both. And the city has actually prohibited parking on the streets for many years in that general area due to congestion. So the district has a history of leasing parking spots from Miller LLC. And at this point, that agreement has expired and we're asking to renew it. So this agreement has been in existence since two thousand and eight. Prior to that, it was actually for students' lease agreement. And legal counsel has reviewed the agreement and is recommending that we move ahead with the agreement approval. So the cost of leasing parking space from Miller LLC Thirty-Second Avenue was included in the adopted two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one operating budget that the board approved on June eighth, two thousand and twenty. And it will require an annual appropriation. So I think there was a question from a board member. Kristen, can you remind me the term of the lease and the renewal periods?
Jim, thank you. I believe that we are in our fourth amendment to this original lease and it would be for ten years with an option for another ten. But I can double-check that while we speak.
And that is consistent with the Hone's Bus Garage lease. And as we discussed earlier, we plan to have two locations within the school district borders where we operate our school buses out of. So with that, the recommended action is before you.
All right, the recommended action is to authorize the Executive Director of Finance and Business to renew a lease agreement with Miller LLC Thirty-Second Avenue. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Chris McCullough.
C N Falconer, second.
All right, thank you. Any discussion from Linda Cohen?
No discussion, thanks.
C N Falconer.
No discussion, thank you.
Sarah Johansson.
No, thanks.
Chris McCullough.
No discussion, thanks.
Cheryl Pousine.
No, thank you.
Bonita Lucky.
No.
Could the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Bonita Lucky, yes. Chris McCullough.
Yes.
Sarah Johansson.
Yes.
Cheryl Pousine.
Yes.
C N Falconer.
Yes.
Andrea King.
Yes, the motion carries unanimously. Okay, three more to go, Mr. Westrom, back to you.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. The next item is to authorize the Executive Director of Finance and Business Services to renew one of our existing cell phone tower lease agreements at Central Middle School and also to enter into two cell phone tower lease agreements. One at Central Middle School and one at East Middle School. Just a little history, I won't go into a lot of detail because once again, the Facility Committee is aware of this and the Finance Committee has discussed it as well. But the district originally entered into a cell phone tower lease agreement at Central Middle School and it was approved by the school board on April thirteenth, two thousand and nine. The term of this lease was for three consecutive five-year terms and the administration is recommending the extension of the lease at this time. We have pretty much told anybody coming to the school district or any organization or company that we're in the middle of a major facility improvement project. Now that we've completed the projects at Central Middle School and East Middle School, we have a high level of confidence that we can offer an agreement to provide the services to our community and also provide the services to those providers. So with that, the recommended action is before you.
All right, the recommended action is to authorize the Executive Director of Finance and Business Services to renew existing cell phone tower lease agreement at Central Middle School and to enter into new cell phone tower lease agreements at Central Middle School and East Middle School. Is there a motion to approve?
Bonita Lucky, so move.
Linda Cohen, second.
Thank you. Any discussion from Linda Cohen?
No discussion, thanks.
All right, C N Falconer.
Yes.
Oh, any discussion?
No.
Thank you. Any discussion from Sarah Johansson?
No, thanks.
Chris McCullough.
Just questions on the two new towers, one at Central and one at East. Are those, are those new leases or new, to be newly constructed towers?
Madam Chair, Director McCullough, I'll start out and then I'll let Kristen finish the remarks. Actually, that's with a different provider. And in all cases, they will use existing infrastructure or they will replace the existing infrastructure with a more robust tower. The actual two lease agreements that are new would potentially be with Verizon. And as you're aware, in both of those areas, the reception is quite weak. So we're looking at this as a, not only an opportunity for the school district to improve services, but for the community. And of course, there would be some type of remuneration to the school district as well. When Kristen works with our legal counsel, she ensures that there's some type of inflationary increase. And so far, the terms have been quite favorable. And we typically earmark any of the resources that we receive as a district to make improvements to those. So Kristen, did you have any other comments that you would like to make? It looks like if, I think that may have answered your question.
Yeah, so the towers are already there. We're just leasing the same infrastructure to different providers, if you will.
Yes, maybe from a political standpoint, we will not be disturbing any wildlife. If I'm not mistaken, I think over at East and probably Central as well. There are, there is wildlife on some of the structures over there. But this will be on a light pole in both locations. One of the light poles at Central Middle School would be adjacent to the dome. And we know because the dome was just renewed or we just replaced it. We have at least a ten-year life on the dome, and so we will not be disturbing that area. And then over at East, now that we know where the fire lane needs to go, we can easily allow a cell phone provider to put a, put a remitter or whatever it's called. or whatever it's called on an existing light structure that's over on that site. Thank you.
Good, thanks.
All right, any discussion from Cheryl Polzin?
No, thank you.
Any discussion from Bonita Lucky?
No discussion.
All right, could the clerk please call the roll?
Chris McCullough?
Yes.
C N Falconer?
Yes.
Cheryl Polzin?
Yes.
Bonita Lucky?
Yes.
Sarah Johansson?
Yes.
Linda Cohen?
Yes.
Andrea King?
Yes. All right, the motion carries. Back to you, Mr. Westrom.
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is our last finance item tonight. Oh no, there's two, there's one more, sorry. Second to last finance item tonight. I guess there are a lot tonight. And this one has to do with our construction program that's in, in place. Tonight, I'm gonna ask the board to authorize the Executive Director of Finance and Business Services to accept and approve change orders related to West Middle School's gymnasium renovation and the increased scope. There is a great deal of information in the board packet and we've also had discussions not only at the Facility Committee meetings, but also at the Finance Committee meetings. And basically, what we've determined is that the West Middle School gym, it would be prudent to provide an additional, additional composite slab to strengthen the load that the floor can support. And just a reminder that this building was built 70 years ago and so we just want to make sure that it's around in another 70 years. So we did a great deal of vetting, a great deal of testing and our finance or facility and construction partners have made this recommendation and we are making this recommendation subsequently to the board. The district will use 2017 voter-approved bond proceeds to finance this additional scope. And we recommend approval so that we can move ahead on this project. Just another couple of quick items. You're probably, probably aware that, that we do have contingencies within our budgets and within the total scope of the $70 million that was approved by the board and by the community in 2017. We do not think this will jeopardize our ability to continue to make the improvements that remain associated with the 2017 voter-approved bonds. So the recommended action is before you.
Mr. Westrom, the recommended action is to authorize the Executive Director of Finance and Business Services to accept and approve change orders related to West Middle School Gymnasium renovation increased scope. Could I get a motion to approve?
Cheryl, so, Cheryl Polzin, so move.
Sarah Johansson, second.
All right, any discussion from Linda Cohen?
No discussion, thanks.
Discussion from C N Falconer?
No discussion, thank you.
Sarah Johansson?
Can I just ask, yeah, thanks, Jim. Can I just ask you a quick question? So do we, in the board packet, we talked about wanting to make sure this happens in order to address, to try to stay on schedule as much as possible. Do we have any idea if, if doing this has, has delayed the project? Not at all, slightly, a little more than slightly? Like how is this, how is this impacting our work at West?
Yes, Madam Chair and Director Johansson. Actually, we were scheduled to begin work on this in early June and we have already started some of the work. However, the testing did delay us slightly. So we're not exactly sure if the utilization of the gymnasium will be delayed significantly, but we know the total project will need to be done in stages now. So for instance, we may not be able to until later in the fall or, or later in the winter. But we do realize that our students, if they come back to school, will want to be able to have access to that gymnasium. So we are seeing some delays and that's one of the reasons why we chose to do a direct negotiation with the vendors and have Cross Anderson and Wold Construction actually advocate on behalf of the school district to use existing vendors and issue changes. Thank you for that question.
Thanks, Mr. Westrom.
Any discussion from Chris McCullough?
No discussion, thank you.
Cheryl Polzin?
At this time, thank you.
Bonita Lucky?
No, thank you.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Cheryl Polzin?
Yes.
C N Falconer?
Yes.
Bonita Lucky?
Yes.
Linda Cohen?
Yes.
Chris McCullough?
Yes.
Sarah Johansson?
Yes.
Andrea King?
Yes. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, Mr. Westrom, we've gotten a lot done tonight. One more. Great job.
But you know what, this is all in your, your district's strategic roadmap from last night. So I'm glad you have that to guide us though. So the next item that we do on an annual basis in this district, nothing is ever routine because we're always doing very robust improvements and, and serving our community. So this recommended action would be to approve the long-term facility maintenance revenue program plan for fiscal years 2021 through 2030. And then the district's two-year and 10-year capital expenditure plans. Once again, the Facility Committee is intimately familiar with this information and the entire board had the opportunity to listen to the facility, comprehensive facility study that was shared by Wold at our last work session. So with that, the recommended action is before you.
Thank you. The recommended action is to approve the long-term facilities maintenance revenue program plan for fiscal years 2020 through 20, I'm sorry, 2021 through 2030. The district's two-year and 10-year capital expenditure plans. To approve. Oh, sorry, Jim?
Actually, this would require a resolution too, by the way. I'm sorry.
All right, thank you.
So this is Sarah Johansson. I so move and ask that we wait reading of the resolution.
Thank you.
Linda Cohen, and I second the motion and wait for reading, please.
Great. Okay, is there any discussion from Linda Cohen?
There's no discussion, thank you.
C N Falconer, any discussion?
No discussion.
Sarah Johansson?
Just a big thank you. I think Jill Schwinn's on this call and Mr. Westrom and John Deutsch, who hopefully is in this evening. It's a, it's a lot to keep up with this long-term facility stuff. And so thanks all for, for looking forwards and backwards and immediately all at the same time.
Chris McCullough, any discussion?
No discussion, thank you.
Cheryl Polzin?
No discussion, but a big thank you.
Bonita Lucky, any discussion?
No discussion.
All right, could the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Linda Cohen?
Yes.
Sarah Johansson?
Yes.
Cheryl Polzin?
Yes.
C N Falconer?
Yes.
Chris McCullough?
Yes.
Bonita Lucky?
Yes.
Andrea King?
Yes. We have approved the resolution. All right, thank you so much, Mr. Westrom, for walking us through all of those action items. All right. Next on our agenda, we have Human Resource Services. And Ms. Voss, would you like to talk to us about the contract with the Wayzata Principal Personnel for fiscal years 2020 through 2022?
Of course I would. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm very pleased to share with you that the school board's bargaining team and the Wayzata principal representatives reached a tentative contract agreement on June 18th. Subsequently, the Wayzata principals ratified that contract on June 26th. You received a summary of the proposed two-year contract and the costing model. As you know, both the union and the board place a very high value on working collaboratively to create a contract that reflects the hard work and the integrity of our building principals and associate principals. We work diligently to maintain a positive balance between remaining competitive and meeting the needs of the district. We are extremely appreciative of the incredible work our building leaders have displayed during this time of unusual circumstance and crisis. We recognize and we do appreciate their hard work. The negotiation team members were Paul Patel, Scott Gangler, Tyler Shepard, Karen Keppler and Jenny Berg for the principals. And your board member, Bonita Lucky, and myself worked diligently to represent the district. I would like to express my appreciation for the collective efforts put forth by the negotiation team members throughout this process. Even though we may have had less time this year, we were focused and completed our work on time. The recommended action is before you.
Thank you. The recommended action is to approve the contract with the Wayzata Principal Association for the period of July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2022, as agreed upon by the bargaining teams and ratified by the Wayzata Principal Bargaining Unit. Is there a motion to approve?
Bonita Lucky, so move.
Linda Cohen's second to motion.
Thank you. Any discussion from Linda Cohen?
No discussion.
C N Falconer?
No discussion.
Sarah Johansson?
Thank you, Bonita and Stacy and all of our principals for, uh, thanks Bonita for representing the board and Stacy for representing the district and principals for engaging with us and moving us forward.
Thanks, Sarah. Any discussion from Chris McCullough?
No discussion, thank you.
Cheryl Polzin?
No discussion, but a big thank you again.
Bonita Lucky?
Just a comment, a statement I just wanted to read that I was thinking about. I was so excited and being a part of. So it was such a great opportunity to be a part of the negotiation process. Thank you to the principals, Paul Patel, Scott Gangler, Tyler Shepard, Karen Kepner and Jenny Berg. Especially thank you to Executive Director of Human Resources, Stacy Voss, for bringing your expertise and experience around the table and engaging in such a fruitful, constructive and open exchanges throughout the entire meeting and the time spent. I'm appreciative for the high-quality engagement put forth by the negotiation team members to include inclusive transparency. Thank you again.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Lucky. Could you please call the roll?
Yes, I can. Bonita Lucky, yes. Sarah Johansson?
Yes.
Linda Cohen? Linda?
Sorry, forgot to unmute, yes.
Okay, Chris McCullough?
Yes.
Cheryl Polzin?
Yes.
C N Falconer?
Yes.
Andrea King?
Yes, the motion carries. We've got a principal's contract. Thanks, everyone. All right, next under Human Resource Services, we have the supplemental salaries for 2020 through 2021. I'll turn it back over to Ms. Voss.
Thank you very much. As you said, the second item I have this evening is the approval of the supplemental salaries for 2020, 2021. And as just a quick reminder, remember, these are pay rates that we need to establish because these members are not part of an established bargaining unit or an unaffiliated handbook. So we're looking at approving a couple of different areas this evening. The first one being the reserve teachers in which we are looking at a $5 increase in pay for levels one, two and long-term substitutes and a $10 increase for level three substitutes for the 2020, 2021 school year. And we are doing that in an effort to remain competitive with probably the anticipated substitute needs for this coming school year. The technology department, our casual employees, we are just increasing those wage requirements to meet minimum wage established rates. Classified staff, which is our substitute pay guidelines for our hourly employees. There are no changes represented for the 2020, 2021 school year. Our activity fund, there are no changes represented for that bargaining units or for that units either. Community education services hourly rates, we are recommending a 2% pay increase for the coming school year. And then for early learning school, which is peppermint fence, we are recommending a 2% pay increase for the coming school year. All of those salary schedules and specific amounts were shared with you prior to this meeting. So the recommended action is before you.
All right, thank you. The recommended action is to approve the 2020 through 2021 supplemental salaries as recommended. Could I get a motion to approve?
Linda Cohen, I so move.
Sarah Johansson, I second.
Thank you. Any discussion from Linda Cohen?
No discussion.
Any discussion from C N Falconer?
No discussion.
Any discussion from Sarah Johansson?
No discussion.
Chris McCullough?
No discussion, thanks, Stacy.
Cheryl Polzin?
No discussion, thank you.
Bonita Lucky?
No discussion.
All right, could the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Chris McCullough?
Yes.
Linda Cohen?
Yes.
Sarah Johansson?
Yes.
Bonita Lucky?
Yes.
Cheryl Polzin?
Yes.
C N Falconer?
Yes.
Andrea King?
Yes. The motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Voss. All right. Next on our agenda, we have board reports. And I have one board report regarding the Legislative Action Committee. Because of the timing of the state legislative session, the LAC School Board rep assignments run from July through June of the following year. Cheryl Polzin has agreed to serve as our board LAC representative again this coming year. Thank you, Cheryl. Alternate positions will be filled by C N Falconer and Andrea King. Do we have any other board reports this evening? All right, hearing none. This concludes our regular meeting for July 13th, 2020. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Bonita Lucky, so move.
Cheryl Polzin, second.
Could the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Linda Cohen?
I guess I don't want the meeting to end. Yes.
Sarah Johansson?
Yes, thanks all.
Bonita Lucky?
Yes.
Cheryl Polzin?
Yes.
C N Falconer?
Yes.
Chris McCullough?
Yes.
Andrea King?
Yes. All right, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.